... Old Lane Community College Building and then the Climate Recovery Ordinance. So let's get going. C-Manager.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'll turn over to Denny and his team. And as you might remember, this is the fifth in a series of -- fourth, ooh, fourth in a series of work sessions that you requested of us referencing downtown improvement.
Thank you. Good afternoon. As the C-Manager indicated, this is the fourth in a series that has included downtown fiber, park blocks, open space, the farmer's market. And today we're here to talk about the old LCC building. And particularly, council's requested that we talk about funding options or alternative funding options for each one of these projects. And I think it makes sense at some level to be talking about these projects individually from a funding standpoint because each one of them is unique. Basically, two of them, the farmer's market, I'm sorry, the park blocks open space and the fiber are kind of infrastructure projects. The other two, the farmer's market and the old LCC building, are kind of longstanding community assets that I think need some upgrade and attention at this point. So they are a little bit unique, but we continue to look at them together because I think together these projects support so many of our goals related to economic development, livability, walkability, vibrancy, safety, regional identity, et cetera. And there's, I think, some clear evidence that the focus and the emergence of these four projects is definitely connected to the investments that we've already made downtown and the positive momentum that is occurring downtown. Downtown has really changed rapidly. And with that, I think there's changing needs of downtown. The reality is, is we're bringing more people downtown. There's more jobs downtown. There's more tech companies downtown. We have more retail, more visitors, more students, and more residents downtown. So again, these projects are really responding to the changing needs of downtown as far as open space and space for startup, et cetera. The old LCC building is no exception. Again, I think this is a direct response to the growth and the needs of the tech sector, the artists in the community, the creative businesses in the community that really want to be downtown. So with that, I'm going to pass it on to Ann, and she's going to give you an overview of the old LCC building project.
Good afternoon. I've got some, a short slideshow for the presentation. And I want to start off just by saying that downtown is a lot more vibrant than it was just five years ago. Five years ago, we had a pit at 10th and Charnelton. Lane Community College acquired the site and has filled that pit with its energy-efficient downtown campus and housing project. The Downtown Urban Renewal Agency contributed the land and granted LCC $8 million towards that project. The new development has become an asset in many ways. The campus offers classrooms and meeting spaces. The housing portion has brought residents to the downtown. There are a lot of people walking in and out of the building's front doors, adding to the downtown's growing vibrancy. It's been a positive change. But now, the old LCC building lies empty and unused. Some have jokingly referred to it as a vertical pit. The building is vacant. It's not adding to the downtown's increased vibrancy. No one comes in and out through its front door. The building is relatively old. It was constructed in 1930 and was a Montgomery Ward department store. At some time in its history, the building was remodeled to make it look more modern. The windows and the architectural details were covered up. This type of remodeling was common across the United States. The building that's now known as the Broadway Commerce Center was once a department store, and it too was modernized, and its architectural details were covered up. It was converted from retail use to office use and slowly declined. It was vacant and did not contribute to downtown's vibrancy. For a long time, no one came in and out through the front doors. But the City of Eugene worked with a private developer to remodel that building for the 21st century. The building is now safer. It was seismically retrofitted, and it offers office space that appeals to today's businesses. It's become a home for firms and creative industries, including the growing tech sector. The retrofitted building now adds to downtown's vibrancy and has been an important catalyst to the positive changes in our downtown. Hundreds of people walk through the building's doors every day, either to go to their office or to visit one of the three popular restaurants in the retail space. The Broadway Commerce Center provides evidence that remodeling a vertical pit can lead to substantive change. Lane Community College owns the building on Willamette. It has no concrete plans for the building. However, the idea of creating an incubator space has emerged. An LCC is in discussions with the community's entrepreneurial network to identify partners and a funding structure. In those conversations, the term "innovation hub" has become the phrase used to describe the idea. An innovation hub is a space where small firms or individuals can come together to share and test ideas. It would include workshops and equipment that could be leased for low costs so that tinkerers, students, academics, and entrepreneurs could test ideas and products. An innovation hub would complement what's happening at 942 Olive and the new Rain Eugene building. The students and companies at 942 Olive will need a place to land, low-cost office or lab space that allows them to build up their young businesses. The innovation hub would include a variety of uses, including maker space, which offers industrial equipment such as 3D printers, industrial sewing machines, laser cutters, other big, heavy equipment. A commercial-grade incubator kitchen could provide a space for small-batch food producers. Commercial kitchens are expensive to build, and a community kitchen would be a space for innovative and independent food and beverage producers to build up a business. A wet lab space is lab space with plumbing, a sealed floor, and a nudge HVAC to remove and replace air at a high frequency. Biotech firms use wet labs to test and develop their products. Small, emerging firms lack the capital to construct their own because it's costly to build. There's a lack of wet lab space in our region that's available to small biotech firms. The regional solutions team at the Governor's Office has been working to identify locations where it could be built across the southern Willamette Valley. Wet lab space that was available to be leased at low rates would be an asset used by small firms across the whole southern end of the Willamette Valley. The lack of wet lab space in our region has attracted the attention of Vancouver, Washington. They are aggressively recruiting biotech firms in Eugene to their low-cost lab space that's at the Port of Vancouver. Including wet lab space in this innovation hub in the center of Eugene would create an anchor for the emerging biotech sector in our region. Local art groups are part of the group working with LCC, and they're identifying how to bring together art and innovation to make a robust hub that helps artists create sustainable business models. An innovation hub could support the people using the space by offering space for kids. Educational kid space could take advantage of the different facilities within the building. Coworking space has become popular in cities across the globe. It's a low-cost way for independent contractors to work in a space outside of their home office. The key thing that coworking space offers is other people. The shared space allows for the sharing of ideas and cross-industry collaboration. Preliminary work shows that the building has the physical capacity to become such an innovation hub. The structure is large. At 66,000 square feet, it's bigger than the Broadway Commerce Center. But it needs a lot of work. These are very dark photos because they're taken from the inside of the building, which is all, it's dark. You might recognize this space if you've ever taken a continuing education class at the downtown center. There's large, open rooms that could be converted to open, working spaces. This photo shows the entryway of the building. It has broad staircases leading up to the mezzanine level. Establishing an innovation hub in the downtown would align with the guiding principles identified in our regional prosperity plan. An innovation hub is a space that supports individuals figuring out their own path to economic prosperity. It offers equipment, space, and access to other people so they can work through new business ideas and could turn, that could turn into a viable business that would create new jobs and new income in the community. But the building needs work, structural and cosmetic, but we've seen such a transformation at the Broadway Commerce Center. At that building, the public-private partnership converted an empty and unattractive building into a handsome and fully occupied building with lots of ground-floor activity. It's possible to do the same thing here. LCC is now working to determine the types of uses that could fit in the building and how to make it a financially viable project. In order for incubator space to be affordable to startup businesses, the project will need some kind of public assistance. The City of Eugene could provide support to this project as it did for their new downtown campus. Urban renewal funds were used to support LCC's new downtown campus, and LCC would like to have a similar partnership here. Last week, LCC's board voted to support the amendment of the downtown urban renewal plan so that it includes funds to renovate this old downtown center. At the March 14th council work session, you directed us to come back with information on how the four projects could be funded in the absence of urban renewal. You've heard about fiber and the park blocks and a permanent facility for the farmer's market. And today, we'll go over the alternative funding mechanisms for the old LCC building. This is the same matrix we've used to discuss funding sources for the three other projects. Vertical access shows the impact or the amount of potential funds. The horizontal access shows the relative feasibility. Higher the funding source is on the chart, the more funds associated with it, the further to the right, the more feasible it is. This project is owned by LCC. The city would be a contributor to it. We're not identifying ways to fund the whole project. As with the fiber project, this is only a discussion of tools the city has to support the project. First one are federal and state grants. These are, of course, competitive. We don't really have an idea at this time of how competitive this project would be relative to other projects applying for the same grants. We have put in an application to the EPA for a renewing of the existing Brownfields Assessment Grant that we have right now. We used that grant at 942 Olive to assess hazardous materials in the building. It paid for a little over $20,000 in costs to identify what sort of hazardous materials were in the building, and we could do the same here for roughly the same amount of money. We also have loans available. The city has two different loan programs that are available to businesses, and both could be used here. It's important to remember that loans are not a funding source. They're simply a way to stretch the timeline associated to pay back, to pay for the project. New Market Tax Credits are a federal program to provide investors tax credits on their federal income taxes. The, it's a very administratively complex program. It makes sense to use on very large projects simply because the administrative costs are high, the administrative work is excessive, and it's not clear if this project would even be eligible for them at this time. We'd have to work through a lot of the details on this project. We also have the option of general obligation or local option levy bonds. For a project like this, where it's really a capital project, it makes more sense to go after a general obligation bond that would be outside the Measure V limits. It's likely that this project will also pursue private funds, donations from individuals to the building, as well as asking tenants in the building to fund some of the interior improvements inside the building. And then there's the option of using existing or the new general fund that comes into the city. But these funds, of course, they're, they're in competition with all the other uses that the general fund, that the general fund supports. And so it's a challenge to find a tool that offers the capacity and the flexibility and the availability of urban renewal for this project.
So with that, again, this is the end of our series of four. The next steps for the council after you discuss this is there's a public hearing on the 23rd. There's a work session scheduled on the 25th to talk about the comments that have been received on the downtown urban renewal plan amendment. And then ultimately, if council wants to have the urban renewal plan amendment remain a viable option for these projects, we've scheduled action, consideration of that on June 13th currently. So those are the next steps after this work session today.
So now, I've got Eddie in the queue, and Alan, and George.
Thank you.
Betty?
Can you tell us how much money, how much city money and how much staff time has been spent on this project so far?
We don't have that here, but if that's information that the council wants, we could try to do that.
But the city is already contributing to it, whether we've decided to or not, right?
What we've contributed to is, of course, council asked us to bring back this information, so we do spend staff time putting together the information, if that's what you mean.
Thank you.
Okay, Alan?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to congratulate Mayor-elect Lucy Venice on her victory last night. I've known and worked with Lucy for well over 20 years, and I know she's going to bring a lot of good energy and good ideas to City Hall. So, and condolences to Emily and Josh Sco for having to do it again. The, the old design of this building is kind of cool. It's very reminiscent of the Broadway Commerce Center. Do we know if that's underneath the stucco still there? Have we looked behind the stucco, behind the curtain?
My understanding is that it is still there. It's just been covered up. If you get really close to the building, you can see where the cover is kind of peeling off. And at this point, I don't think it's clear how much can be saved. You know, a lot of it wasn't, you couldn't save all of those details on the Broadway Commerce. It depends on the, how it was done. But that's definitely an aim of the folks that have been looking at this, is to keep as much of that original detail as possible.
Yeah, we thought that might be possible on the Broadway Commerce Center, but...
It's very difficult because openings have been altered. In some cases, the integrity of the brick is compromised because it's been stuccoed on and...
Yeah, right. Same problem with the Broadway Commerce Center. So, the Broadway Commerce Center is actually a public-private partnership, essentially. I remember when the mayor and I went up, met with Brad Malzen up in his building, and so we're sitting around a conference in this building that was completely filled with tenants. And we said, "Well, you know, we've heard from four local developers that you can't do anything with this building in Eugene." And I said, "What do you say to that?" And he said, "Well, 12 people said you couldn't do what we're doing in this building that we're sitting in." So that was a very good answer. Turned out to be correct because that's been, I think, a pretty tremendous success at the Broadway Commerce Center. And I still think that public-private partnership is a really good idea, and I think it could work here in the city and LCC and maybe a private developer or other folks. A lot of the money that we did for Broadway Commerce Center was actually federal grants and loans that we funneled back to it. I'm wondering how much actually the urban renewal district had funding mechanisms and things like that had to do with it, or is it mostly just the federal monies that we were funneling to, to get that building renovated?
Yeah, in the case of the Broadway Commerce Center, it was mostly federal. If you recall, we used our Section 108 borrowing capacity, which means we pledged our future CDBG block grant allocation in support of a borrowing.
Yeah.
So we borrowed $8 million through the, through HUD. And that came with a $2 million Brownfield Economic Development Initiative grant, which goes with the Section 108. So there was $10 million available. The unfortunate thing is we have maximized our Section 108 borrowing. Eight million was the maximum we could borrow from HUD based on our annual allocation. So until that is, obligation is paid off, we don't really have additional Section 108 capacity.
Oh, okay. So that's, oh, okay.
We're still paying it off.
Is it possible to get another one of those?
Again, because we have, we have an obligation, a Section 108 obligation...
You only have one?
You can only borrow five times, I think, your annual allocation, and we've already done that. So we couldn't borrow more at this point. It's something we could look into because it has been paid down a little bit, but it's a long-term obligation.
Right. That was, what was the term on that? Was that a 20-year, or was it?
Complicated.
No. It's not a yes-no question?
It's long.
So there might be some...
10-plus years, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I remember the Section 108 because I remember Mash Klinger was always trying to get out on a Section 8, which many was crazy, and people thought, "We were crazy." And 108 was close to Section 8, so I remember all of that. Turned out, we weren't so crazy. Okay, thanks.
George?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, let's think back a few months ago. This whole notion of amending the urban renewal district and extending it started with Councilor Clark's idea as a way to fund the fiber optic project. And then things got, kept getting piled on as time went by. The truth is, every single one of these proposed projects can be paid for without amending the current urban renewal plan. There's, there's ways to do that. And this particular option of tossing in the old LCC building is, possibly makes the least sense of any of the suggestions. LCC knew they would have a vacant, empty property after they moved into their new building. It hasn't been vacant that long. It, there's no way that it falls into the category of slum and blight. It was used 100% until quite recently. LCC is totally capable of selling, the city does not need to get involved with LCC's property transactions. They're perfectly capable of doing that themselves. They can sell to a developer. They'll sell for market rate. What is the market rate? Whatever anyone's willing to pay for the building. The city gets in, I will guarantee you, we'll pay them way too much money, and we will sell it for a song to a developer. And I think it's time to let the market mechanisms work here. You know, there's all this talk about, "Well, children can have a space in there, and there could be maker space." That, that's being provided by the library levy. There's going to be maker space in the library. We've heard about that during the presentation of, you know, supporting the levy for the library. It's going to greatly expand stuff for children, you know, all the other stuff. Now maybe whoever buys it, maybe they'll want to do those things. Or maybe it would be a completely different use. We have no idea what, what the possible uses are. Yes, what we saw are possibilities, but there's many other ones. If a private party buys it, it's up to them to decide how to use it. So I, there's absolutely no reason for the city to get involved with this one. I printed out a copy of the Downtown Urban Renewal District Report, not the plan. This is the report of the new plan that doesn't exist yet. On page 12, LCC's considering redevelopment for its currently vacant building. Farther down, LCC has not released timing information on when they will be ready to finalize plans and move forward with redevelopment. That's fine. The city doesn't have to be involved with that. Let them take their time and decide how they want to, what they want to do with the property, and they will put it up for sale, and a buyer will buy it at the market rate. There'll probably be several people who'd been on that building. The city should not be one of them. Need a second round, please.
Greg?
Thanks, Mayor. And I would take issue with one thing that you said, George. I used to teach in that building approximately 18, 20 years ago, and Dracula's lair was better lit and maintained than what, what that, what that building was and how it has deteriorated over the years. So a couple of questions real quick. One of the things I didn't see in the AIS was what, what targets for job creation out of the tech sector and the art sector and the other pieces that would go into this? What would that look like? Do you have any ideas, ballpark? What are projections in terms of job creation and then growth from there?
I think if you look at the ecosystem for economic development, particularly around Rain, and we talk a lot about the Rain entrepreneurial ecosystem, Rain has been fabulous. We're accelerating companies through the accelerator, and when they come out, they're usually small, starving, strapped for cash, and need cheap, affordable space to land. So this coworking space idea is really about helping folks find a, an affordable place to land as they're in their kind of infinite stages of business development. That could be artists, it could be companies, it could be biotech companies. So it really does, like Rain, it really does take a longer-term view of what those companies can become, and hopefully, they grow out of the cheap space and they end up in market-rate space downtown and end up being like a Palo Alto software, or a Vont assessment, or Pipe Works Games, or those types of companies that have, you know, 20, 30, 50 employees. So it does take a long-term perspective like Rain when you look at kind of this kind of incubate, incubation space, because you're trying to incubate them into the future, and it does, it does take some patience and time.
And I'll also point out that we did do a joint project with LCC that I think has been extremely successful, which is a couple of blocks down here, and that's the LCC Downtown Center. And for years, we had a hole in the ground where that, where that, you know, facility is now. And it's thriving, functioning, and, you know, producing quite a bit of synergy and revenue and circulation. And we've got people living downtown there and the whole bit. So, you know, you answered part of one of my other questions about placemaker space and synergy in terms of our high-tech footprint. I think, I think maybe, I think maybe that you, you covered it, Denny, because I think that expanding that footprint is critical for what investments we're making in Rain and in the downtown core, and that if we don't do that, you know, as has been articulated, there are other communities that are hovering around, ready to snatch up, you know, our goodies and the companies that will eventually grow into, you know, thriving, you know, businesses that will produce lots of revenue and lots of jobs in the future somewhere else if we don't make the investment now here.
Counselor Pryor. And by the way, since Alan congratulated other people, it's only fair that we congratulate Counselor Pryor and Counselor Taylor for the election.
And Sorette. Those of us that fought hard battles.
Those hard-fought battles.
They were really difficult.
Good campaigns, you guys. Thank you. Two kind of layered questions that I think are really central here. And the first question that has to be answered before you can even talk about the second one. The first question is, is a hands-off approach for downtown the right approach? And I can remember for many years, the standard line was, "Leave it alone, and it will take care of itself." And the Center Court building sat empty. The pits sat unfilled. Downtown was dying. But the prevailing idea was, "Well, it'll do whatever it's going to do. Just leave it alone. Hands-off." And downtown was dying. And I defy anyone in this room to look at downtown 15 years ago and say it was vibrant and alive. It wasn't. And so when the City of Eugene said, "We need to provide partnership," in whatever form that needs to be, that was the jumpstart for downtown beginning to revitalize. The LCC Downtown Center that Greg just referenced was a partnership, and it would not have happened if it had not been for us being a partner in that building. The Broadway Commerce Center was a partnership, public-private, but it was a partnership. There had to be a city involvement. All of the innovations, improvements, and great things that are happening downtown are because we didn't take a hands-off approach. I think the downtown we have today is factual proof that you have to be a partner if you want success to occur, which leads to the second question. What should partnership look like? What does partnership need to be? And I think that's really the question we're debating here, at least for me. To me, it's not an issue of whether we should be hands-on or hands-off. I've seen the disaster that hands-off results in, and I've seen the great, wonderful things that happen when hands-on does occur. But how should those hands be applied, and what should they look like? The debate now is, is a tool that we've been using for decades that doesn't cost the taxpayers any additional money, the tool we should use, or should we look at some other tool? And I think we've really said, you know, what might those other tools be? And I thought that's been, that's been a fine conversation to have. But if, if you have a tool that would imminently complete this project, actually, all of these projects, but let's just talk about this one, complete this project without costing the taxpayers any more money, and you say, "You know what? I just don't like that tool. I think I don't want to use that tool anymore. I want to use a tool instead that's going to cost the taxpayers some more money." Now, will you vote for that? I think that's a tough sell. I think there's many, many appropriate times to use bonds and use those kinds of funding mechanisms. But to say, "I'm getting rid of a tool that's not going to cost you anything in favor of a tool that is going to cost you something simply because I don't like the first tool," is not really being responsive to the financial responsibilities of the voters.
Thank you. So we're going to second round, and I'm aiming at this ending in 15 minutes, if not sooner. And I did want to, I visited maker space in DC twice. And what the library has in mind for maker space is not that maker space. It's what I really very much appreciate, what the library is offering, and it is part of what we're trying to do. But real maker space is, is, has lots of equipment and lots of opportunities for people. And that's, I think, more of what we're talking about here. Also, in our southern Willamette economic development work, we've been talking about the need for wet labs in this area, and it's a very big need to, another thing that's very much needed in the community. very much needed in the community. And then we are in a need of finding a way to pump up the arts part of our arts and outdoors as a great city, and this is one opportunity to go in that direction as well. So I think what's before you all is, do you want to do this? I would say that, like other people have said, that it depends on if you think our economy has totally recovered, and the work is done, and everybody has jobs that needs it, and everybody has all their needs met, and we're all fine and good to go. But I don't think most of us feel, we feel we've made huge strides, but there's still a long way to go. And as I probably will keep on bringing up, at the core of this to me is our families that live in this community and their need to be able to take care of themselves and their needs. And building an economy is not just to be helping out developers or whatever downtown. It's really trying to be sure that we have a healthy economy that will support our families, and they'll be able to do well, and then our city does well. So I think those are the kinds of things that you need to keep in mind as you look at this. Round two, George.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, the first thing we need to keep in mind is the promise that we made to the voters and residents in 2010, that we would let this Downtown Urban Renewal District terminate. The majority of council teams ready to break that promise at the urging of manager and staff who also made that promise. Talk about destroying trust. Wow, that's, you're just really inviting it there. You mentioned that Vancouver is luring biotech businesses away from Eugene. Did you elaborate on that?
The Port of Vancouver has recently built up, they converted, I think, an old Red Lion motel into wet lab space. It needs to be plumbed, so a hotel is a good way to create it. And they have been, they, I believe, recruited a firm out of Portland, and they've been talking to--
Out of Eugene?
They did recruit one out of Portland as well. And they've been talking to one of the firms that went through our Rain Accelerator and have offered them low-cost space, and some, I can't remember all of the details of the deal, so that they would relocate up there. And they come down here and talk to these folks. Apparently, they see our region as a good place that is creating little businesses, and they can come pick them off.
Did the Eugene firm take them up on their offer?
My understanding is they're still considering the offer.
Okay. And what about the Portland firm? What inducements, special inducements did they get to move across the river?
It was the rent, and it was very low rent. It was a primary feature that they offered. I could find out more detail if you'd like.
Yeah, I'd like to know more details. Okay, let's see. I thank Counselor Pryor that you were asking the wrong questions. Is a hands-off approach okay for downtown? Nobody's ever said, let's just never do anything for downtown. Let's do it smartly, though, rather than this hammer approach of tossing all these projects into the urban renewal, you know, amendment idea. I'll save going down the list for later when we have, you know, a more focused conversation on what's shaping up to be the final plan. I do have, I want to switch gears here just a second and go back to the Downtown Urban Renewal District Report. This is a report for a plan that doesn't exist yet. That's evidently what we're working on now. And I see the map here, and I see that City Hall has been added. That's one of the proposals, add the whole old City Hall block, amend the plan to increase the area. But then I also see that it's a C2. It's supposed to be zoned, commercial. And I'd like an explanation for that. It's currently zoned governmental, and it's still colored blue, but then it has C2 in the center of the blue.
The labels were misplaced.
Where was that one supposed to go?
They've been corrected in the report that's attached to the ordinance that's posted for the public hearing on Monday. They're corrected. So just the labels need to go one lockup.
Will they have copies of those before then? Will they be in the packet?
Yes.
Okay. I've just printed this off the city's website. Okay, all right, thank you.
Are you finished, George?
Yes, I am.
Alan?
Yeah, I like all the concepts that have been mentioned here, and I think it could work in this space. And I think the city could play a pivotal role in making it happen, as we did with the Broadway Commerce Center. And as with the Broadway Commerce Center, I don't think we need the Urban Renewal District to make it happen. And as with the Broadway Commerce Center, no additional taxes were asked or other citizen paying the cost of doing it. What happened at the Broadway Commerce Center was some very creative thinking, and that's what I think would be needed here. And all those kind of deals are complicated. You have multiple moving parts and different things you cobble together to make something happen, and that's likely to happen here. What I think is different in this case, though, is that we have LCC as the owner and a key partner in trying to make this happen. When was the last time this building was actually used?
I think LCC left in 2013, I think is when they moved to the new building.
There's the impact feasibility matrix slide. Yeah, that one. I understand. Can you explain what you meant by impact and feasibility, and low, high?
Impact means the amount of dollars that funding source could bring. So the higher on the vertical axis means the more dollars.
Oh, okay. Amount of money.
The amount of money. And then the feasibility is the likelihood that we could have access to those funds. The loans are on the far right because they're very feasible. We know that those programs exist. We've got federal and state grants sort of in the middle because we don't really know how feasible those are.
Right, right, yeah. Probably a very similar chart would have been drawn for the Broadway Commerce Center when we were looking at it. What do you think the difference in the chart between the Broadway Commerce Center when we were doing that and this would be?
The main tool that we have available is no longer available, and the other tools that we use, actually, for both the LCC project for the housing part, is federal stimulus dollars. We used Energy Efficiency Block Grant, which is a federal stimulus program. That went into the Broadway Commerce Center. Some stimulus recovery zone bonds went into the LCC project in the Woolworth Building. Some of those tools aren't available anymore because they were short-term stimulus dollars. Again, HUD 108 and the Betty Grant were really the main programmatic support for that project, and at least where we sit today, they're not available.
And last, but other tools could become available. God forbid we should go into another recession, those type of tools might become available again. Is there any time constraint on this project that is forcing action in the next couple of years?
Only that, we don't own it. LCC owns it, and there is a cost of maintaining and retaining this building that I assume they are aware of and causes some stress for them. So I think this is a building that needs a solution from, not only they're maintaining the building and the costs associated with that, but it's right across from our transit station. It's on a great street, and it's not active, and I think that's the biggest problem we need to solve.
And so they've been involved in this visioning process and don't have any immediate plans to sell the project. Is that fair to say?
You know, their board has discussed it, and I think they're interested in this concept at this point, and they're interested in the private-public partnership model and us partnering with them, like we did on the LCC campus building. What their plans are as far as ownership and selling, it's not at that level of detail. This project has to emerge a little bit further before we decide details. And I think, like the farmer's market and like the open space, we're not quite sure what the project is, but the idea is, if urban renewal is going to be a tool, the question is, do we keep it available for this project if we want to use it?
Right, yeah. And all these different, the only one I would, when I think about changing the name on was the incubator kitchen. It kind of sounded like you're incubating, like bacteria or something like that in the kitchen, but maybe I'm reading into it too much.
Are you finished?
Yeah, I think so. I'm here all week.
So a couple of comments, and we turn the last comments over to Betty. One is that I think it's important, at least from my perspective, that we think about what we want separate from how we are going to get there and make a decision about things that we think are worth pursuing, and then what the options are to doing that. And that can, as you know, happen over time, and a lot of variation there. The other thing that I suggest in this conversation, because it comes up every time, is that I think each counselor has a right, in their position, to determine what they think is keeping trust with the public. Betty?
Thank you. First, I want to say that if urban renewal were free, it would be different. If people, it's unobtrusive, people don't realize they're paying the taxes for urban renewal. It is taxed, that money doesn't just come from nowhere. Also, they don't notice it when the money is spent, so it's easy to spend. Easy to collect, easy to spend. It doesn't make it right. Next, during that, if you remember, there was a time when there was a plan to destroy all the buildings on West Broadway and bring in some national stores, which was defeated, which I actually helped with a group defeated. And during that time, some of us always said that changes should be local and incremental. And that's what's happened recently. I did support building, renovating the Beam Building, well, the Commerce Building, we called it the Beam Project at the time. I think that was, that one thing was a good thing for the city to help with, and that has stimulated a lot of other growth. While I'm talking about that, I just, since Brad Molson was quoted, I have to quote one more thing of his, which is kind of related. But when he was here, when some people that looked very disreputable passed by carrying backpacks and all kinds of junk, and a TV reporter said, what do you think of that? And he said, lady, I'm from New York. I thought that was a great response.
I think he said it didn't bother him a whit, right?
No, it didn't bother him. And that's what, sometimes I think we're doing things just to get rid of people we don't like to look up. As for what happened with downtown, whether, before the city built it, started building it up, and I don't think it's our job to totally build it up, but first, the city, not the people who are here right now, but the city destroyed downtown with urban renewal farms. And they also, when the Sears Building was empty, instead of waiting till there was something to put in it, they made the pit, which then was very, looked horrible, but that didn't have to be. So that happened with urban renewal, too. It's too easy to spend the money. As far as this building is concerned, I don't think it's our business. I think it would be great if a philanthropist bought it and made, put a youth center in there, which is something I've thought for years we really need downtown. We need two things desperately, to make life better for all people, not just for businesses. We need a homeless shelter, just a shelter, not apartments. And we need a youth center for young people, and I guess I'm out of time. Bye. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you. And we're going to wrap this up, and I will pick it up next round.
You forgot.
Thank you.
Here?
Yes.
I was going to say, can I get one other thing in on this?
Quickly.
Quickly. You know, I grew up in a city when urban renewal was used for various nefarious purposes. And let me say this, urban renewal is not in and of itself evil, nor is it good. It is a tool. It depends on whose hands the tool is in and what purpose it is used for. So Counselor Taylor did point out some things that, you know, may be true, some may be debatable about the effects of how urban renewal has been used in this community. But I say this, I think that what we have done over the last 10, 15 years with urban renewal on whole has been a good thing. And I trust that the city manager and that the partners that are being involved in these proposed projects will do the right thing with the tool that is given them.
Thank you. Okay, next up is the Climate Recovery Ordinance update. Team Two.
Go ahead when you're ready.
City Manager?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm Ethan Nelson, the interim manager for intergovernmental relations and also serving a temporary role as the Sustainability Liaison. Today, we are here, excuse me, we are providing you an update on internal implementation efforts of the Climate Recovery Ordinance, affectionately called the CRO. Providing the majority of the presentation is Matt McCray, the city's climate energy analyst. And before I turn the presentation over to Matt and also Matt Rodriguez from our Public Works Department, I wanted to provide a short update on the sustainability program and also highlight the recognition Eugene is getting as a climate protection leader. In the past six weeks, Matt and I have been working on developing a new work plan for the sustainability program that prioritizes time and effort on implementing the CRO. The emphasis on mapping out timelines and deliverables for specific projects, including the internal and community-wide greenhouse gas, GHG, inventories, an update to the community-wide climate and energy action plan, developing internal and external climate communications plan, and continuing the efforts to present a 350 parts-per-million target for emissions to this body. This work is an ongoing effort that the city started over nine years ago, when we completed our first GHG inventory. We simply are progressing in a steady and stable fashion. This long-term effort has reaped many benefits, including both the GHG reductions that Matt will share with you shortly, and also recognition for Eugene's innovation and leadership in climate protection at the local and international levels. I'm pleased to highlight the work that Matt has been leading and that has garnered the respect and recognition of both our local community and the national scientific community. As many of you may have seen, Matt was identified as one of a handful of local climate leaders in the March 10 Eugene Weekly. Matt also recently was featured on a podcast of the American Geophysical Union on the city's 350 parts-per-million work. And the day after the city of Boulder visited Eugene, Matt's editorial on climate resiliency was published in the University of Colorado Boulder's Natural Hazards Observer period article. Eugene is fortunate to have Matt's level of experience and interest in support of our community's climate protection vision. Lastly, I am pleased to inform you that Mayor Piercy has been asked by the U.S. Department of State to attend the second U.S.-China Climate Leadership Summit in Beijing early this June. The summit will focus on policy and programmatic information sharing between Chinese and U.S. city leaders, and is a public-private partnership between the U.S. State Department, Chinese government, and C-40 Cities Program. The nonprofit C-40 Cities is funding all travel expenses for the mayor and accompanying staff. We are excited to continue the positive trajectory of our climate protection efforts that are based on a sound, triple-bottom-line approaches, those that protect our environment, build our local economy, and provide support to members of our community. With that, I will turn it over to Matt, and thank you.
Thanks, Ethan. Mayor, councilors, I have a few slides, I guess, as per usual. I don't intend to take more than about 10 minutes to go through slides and then leave the remainder of the time for discussion. So I'm going to hit on emissions from internal operations. We have updated emissions inventory, so I'm going to share results from that, and then talk with you about GHG reduction strategies that we've been working on over the past 12 months with staff. And then, again, leave time for discussion. So just a quick refresher, the Climate Recovery Ordinance requires a number of things. It formalized our reduction goals, right? So it codifies our existing targets to achieve carbon neutrality for internal operations and to see our community fossil fuel use cut in half by 2030. It set milestones, calls for us to set milestones to achieve goals, so we presented those to you late last year. And the next step is to develop a science-based reduction goal. We shared a science-based 350 target with you a couple of months ago, and we'll be following up with that again later this spring. Provide regular updates. So that's what we're doing here today, is we're providing you with an update of where we are and where we're headed. with an update of where we are and where we're headed. And finally, it establishes a process of analysis, reporting, and readjustment if community or internal targets are not being met. So with that, a quick update on our internal emissions trend and our target. So we've been, as Ethan just mentioned, we've been doing greenhouse gas inventories, starting in 2005, and when we did that, in 2007, using 2005 data. And when we did that, we also collected information to do 2000 inventory. So we have a bit of trend information here, which is really useful. And you can see that we're moving downward, which is also fantastic. So, to start with, I want to call your attention to the top there. That block is district steam that we were using to heat buildings in the downtown core, and the city buildings were some of those. And you can see here that we've now stopped using that. In 2011, we ceased using that and moved most of those buildings to high-efficiency natural gas heating systems. So there's one drop in our emissions between 2010 and 2013. Moving down, the blue block is natural gas, and that has remained fairly steady over time. It increased a little bit in 2013 because of moving district steam-heated buildings onto natural gas, but it still has a lower total emissions than, than we were getting from that district steam system. And next, down to fleet, that has remained fairly steady over time. And then finally, down to the green block, which is our electricity use. A few notes here, it's been going down steadily over time, largely because of the increase in renewables that have been available to us in our electricity grid, but also because of strategies that we've, we've taken with commissioning of our buildings, which is just tuning them so they work really efficiently. By investing in high-efficiency new buildings, like the library and others, we're continuing to reduce the amount of electricity that's being used. So that is a result, again, of both reduction in use and increased renewables. The jump, or the reduction from 2010 to 2013 is largely because of increased hydro on our electricity grid. And so we could expect the potential for that number to come back up, the electricity emissions to come back up, the next time we do an inventory, because it was, it was an abnormally high year of hydropower. And then lastly, while we're on this, I just want to point out, there's our target, which is a 55% reduction in emissions with the intent that we would then offset any remaining emissions. So that's what I have as far as an update on emissions. And now I'd like to talk with you about the strategies that we've been developing and the work that's been done to queue up a set of strategies for emissions reductions. We convened an interdepartmental team, both a core climate team, which is one representative from each department, and then task teams who are helping us with specific strategies. I'd like to acknowledge the folks who put in that work. Are there any of the core team members here? I don't, I know Matt Rodriguez, next to me, is one of those, and he's going to share some information with you here shortly. But it was really, it was a really remarkable effort, and a lot of good thinking has gone into this, into this work. And I'd also like to acknowledge the work, we had three execs, Kirk Corey and Kristi Hammett and Chief Groves, who all helped, have helped us move the ball down the field on this effort and have similarly put in a ton of time. So we established this team, and, and one of the first proposals, actually, from this team was that we focus on our internal emissions first. And if you recall, we brought that proposal back to you, and you all agreed that, yeah, we should, we should be looking at our internal emissions before we turn our focus to community-wide emissions. So that's why we're here with, with this update in particular. So we pulled together the team, we evaluated a number of strategies that were, were very broad, and we analyzed the potential reductions in emissions and the potential cost of those, of each of the strategies. And what we've brought back here is all of the strategies that pay for themselves. So all of these strategies that I'm about to share with you are things that, over the lifetime of this project or change, will pay for itself, and most of them result in ongoing savings. In fact, all of them result in ongoing savings. So here they are. Here's where we're headed, the strategies that we have queued up. Electrify the auto fleet. We don't currently have a lot of electric vehicles in our fleet, largely because what's currently available are sedans, and we have a really highly efficient fleet of Priuses that do very well. And it just doesn't, it doesn't make a lot of sense right now for us to sell really highly efficient, well-functioning vehicles to, to get a marginal change or improvement in, in fuel use. What's important to note is that just on the horizon, we're expecting like one- and two-ton trucks, so larger, you know, utility trucks that can be used in Public Works, for example. We're also seeing an expansion of, of electric vehicles that are starting to be used for, for police vehicles in other communities. And we would expect that within several years, we would see the kind of performance from electric vehicles that we, we may be able to make an adoption into many other, many other uses. So electrification of our auto fleet is, is a big piece of this. LED indoor lighting, so we don't currently have a lot of LED being used for indoor lighting, and so the, the next step would be to, in fact, we have folks in facilities already who are determining the neck, the buildings that would make sense for us to start doing these retrofits of, and have them queued up already. Another one is fuel-efficient driver training. In other communities, cities have seen a drop somewhere on the order of 8% or 10% reduction in fuel consumption just by training staff to be more cognizant of the way they operate their vehicle. Retrocommissioning of major city facilities, the library, for example, and again, our facility staff are really on top of this. They've done a ton of work to analyze what buildings we should start with and, and are queuing that work up right now. Retrocommissioning is really, it's like tuning up your car. You go back into the building and you make sure that it's operating the way you intended it to, and that all the systems are functioning as efficiently as possible. And so a rollout of, of retrocommissioning major facilities would have a pretty significant reduction in emissions. Radiant heat for large spaces, excuse me, we're already using radiant heat in fire stations, in those, the big fire station bays, so as opposed to heating all the air, and then garage doors go up and all that hot air goes out, use radiant heat system that warms the people and the equipment in the, in that area. And that, it's just using that same type of equipment to heat large spaces. No idling policy. We currently have a no-idling policy, but we recognize that there are opportunities to improve on our implementation of that. And then substituting laptops for desktops. Laptops just inherently use a fraction of the electricity that desktops do, and they're coming down in price. And so making the substitution starts to pay for itself and, and saves electricity over time. And we have quite a huge number of, of computers that are used, obviously, for our operations. And lastly, Phase Two streetlight LED retrofit. We just completed a Phase One, but the, the next phase of streetlight LED retrofits, we would expect to, to result in pretty significant savings in electricity. Upgrading water heating, we have water heating systems in Public Works, Fire, and Police, where we have an opportunity for energy savings. Increase in remote training, so there are some work teams who do a lot of training and, and do a lot of traveling to do that training. And we, we recognize that just by making it easier for people to do that training remotely, we can save quite a bit of, of fuel specifically, and particularly within Fire, the Fire and EMS, there's a lot of required training and a lot of driving of large trucks that can be avoided. So there's an opportunity there. And finally, renewable diesel. This is a product that has just recently become available. It's not the same as biodiesel. It is a bio-based product, like biodiesel is, but it's refined differently than biodiesel is. And remarkably, it has almost exactly the same performance properties that petroleum diesel does. And we have already now substituted that product in for all of our diesel-burning equipment. And this has the potential to drop emissions dramatically, depending on what the feedstock is for that renewable diesel. But what's important here, though, is that, you know, we've always, we've been hung up in the past by what mix of biodiesel we could use in fire trucks in particular, right? For response vehicles, we can't afford any drop in performance. It has to be reliable. And so that has been one of the things that has prevented us from using a larger amount of biodiesel. But we're now using a 100% bio-based fuel in our fire trucks and our other diesel equipment. And so there's a significant drop in emissions that can be associated with that. So with that, covering those, I'm going to turn it over to Matt Rodriguez. You may have met him already, he's the acting traffic engineer in Public Works and really did a lot of the, the front-end thinking about analyzing a potential for a streetlight retrofit. So that'll just bring that up.
Okay, passing that.
Yeah, right. Right.
All right, wow, that was easy. Hi. So, yeah, Matt asked me just to give a, kind of a brief update on the Phase One LED retrofit project. The first phase replaced about 4,800 streetlights in the city, predominantly in residential areas. Those are the lower wattage fixtures that we have out there for street lighting, and that was really the opportunity that many cities were taking advantage of for retrofit, because the price of those fixtures continues to go down while the efficiency continues to go up. So it really hit a critical payback for us, where it made not only great environmental sense, but also fiscal sense to look at this investment. So the energy reduction that we're projecting as part of this project is pretty significant. It's about 1.6 million kilowatt-hours, if you're looking at your, you know, your home meter, and that's enough electricity to power about 1,700 homes for a year. So very significant. It's somewhere between a 65% and a 70% reduction in energy from the streetlights that were replaced. The project really, I talked about the ability to pay that off in a short timeframe. That was really aided by about $240,000 in rebates we received from E-Web, so they're a great partner in the project, as well as an Oregon Department of Energy pass-through tax credit of between $400,000 and $500,000. That exact value hasn't been set yet, and that gets set at the time of sale. But that basically gets to a payoff of about eight years, slightly less for us on this project. The fixtures themselves are warranted for 10 years, so that was really our goal, is to be able to pay it off within the warranty period that gave us some surety in the investment. They're expected, however, to last about 15 to 20 years. That's the projected life of them. And as Matt said, the Phase Two project will really look at the higher wattage fixtures we have on higher classification streets, so, you know, looking at major collectors and arterials. The LEDs don't perform quite as well at that level, so the energy reduction isn't what we'd like it to be. The fixtures are also more expensive, so I think, you know, we're projecting within the next five years, looking at the Phase Two, and we're just kind of watching the technology continue to improve and the price continue to come down.
And while we're on this slide, I'll just point out the estimated, or the reductions from the current Phase One. So on the left here on this, this bar, is our 2013 emissions, and you can see the drop. It's about 3.5% in our total emissions from, in these categories, just from that LED retrofit that just got completed. So we're, it's making, making a difference, measurable difference. All right, so the, I have just a few more slides here. While, while working with this core team, we developed not only specific strategies to reduce emissions that I just shared with you, we also developed some proposed internal policies. And so that's what I'm going to share with you next, is a few of those most effective or expected to be most effective policies. These are supported in concept by executive leadership, but there's also some additional work to do to refine these particular internal policies to, to meet our needs. So one of them is department-level reduction plans. So, well, some, some of these might be standardized. The idea is that we would have department-specific plans, and the, the concept just being that the people who are doing the work in Public Works know best how to, you know, where the opportunities are to reduce emissions in Public Works, and, and the same in Fire and EPD. And it's interesting to note, there are examples from San Francisco where they've done this, and they're finding it to be successful, in, in engaging all the brainpower that exists within their organization. Another internal policy that's proposed is to integrate and make more explicit the connection between our climate goals and the capital improvement plan and the multi-year financial plan. Again, there's work to do to figure out how we do that so that it meets our needs for, for information and, but isn't cumbersome. But that is something that our executive managers are supportive. And finally, to create a carbon fund. So the idea is, this would, this would not be a legal reporting fund, it's just a source of dollars available to implement the Climate Recovery Ordinance. And it would initially be capitalized with, with supplemental budget $1 from fiscal year 16 that you all agreed to and allocated for implementation of Climate Recovery Ordinance. The idea is that it would give us a funding source to, or a source of dollars to use to implement the Climate Recovery Ordinance. Some of it may be used to help with those department-specific greenhouse gas reduction plans, but others may be, other dollars may be used specifically to, to help fund projects, to make, to make things work on the, on the front end. So that's all I have as far as information for you. The remainder of the time is for conversation.
Thank you very much. That was very informative. I've got Alan and Greg, do you want to be in queue? And Chris? Okay. I really like the CIP and capital improvement combining work, integrating work. I think that's really significant and a smart thing to do. And only question I have for you is, as you do climate plans for different departments, is your core group sort of overseeing that everybody's working on it at the same rate, so to speak?
Right. Well, the, the concept is that myself and other sustainability staff, the Sustainability Liaison, would be able to support departments in doing that work and help keep things, keep things moving and provide assistance, but that, yeah, that it would be done by the departments, you know, as their, as it makes sense for their work plans. We haven't really dove into the details of exactly what that like, looks like, how often they would be updated, et cetera. Right now, it's just a conceptual proposal.
Yeah, it just seems natural to me that some might be more quickly to adapt to this than others, and you have to kind of find ways to encourage people to keep moving along. So having, taking that seriously seems really important. Alan, you're next.
Yeah, it's good to see numbers and bar charts attached to the many actions we've been taking, and it's great to see the list of actions that we have already taken and will take. So we are indeed doing a lot. A lot of people are saying we're doing anything, but in fact, we've been doing quite a bit. I think that the, the new City Hall is actually going to be another big, dramatic drop in that chart, when we go from the old City Hall to the new City Hall in terms of the energy efficiency associated with it and the energy use over time. And this is all great, but we need to report this better and more frequently. And that's actually part of the Mayor's Ad-Hoc Committee on Climate Recovery Ordinance. It's part of their charge that might create, is to look at, how do we do that better, and what's the frequency, maybe possibly a webpage that anybody can access anytime, so we can be transparent about meeting our goals and where we're going. Maybe, you know, something like a United Weight Thermometer, the charts that you have to show us where, how, how we're making progress towards getting to the, the internal goals of 2020. The Climate and Energy Action Plan was finished in 2010, so that's at least six years old or older. It was groundbreaking at the time, it was excellent work. But today, we have better tools to help quantify the cost-effectiveness and also the greenhouse gas reductions that would be associated with different actions. And the CAPP really did high, medium, low on cost-effectiveness and greenhouse gas reductions. It wasn't very quantified at all. And we wouldn't do a climate action plan like we did then, because we have better tools and more sophistication today. And in fact, one of the things that people are doing is they're creating their own Mackenzie curves, the curve that said, these are the actions that create greenhouse gas reductions and how cost-effective they are. So you create the least-cost plan to meet the goals by doing the stuff that has the biggest bang for the buck first, and then get to the stuff that's really expensive and doesn't have that much impact later. So you'd be a smart way of doing it. And that's also part of the Mayor's CRO committee to help, help think about that. So how far along are we on that track, Matt and Ethan?
As far as estimating...
Making it more quantified and getting to our own least-cost plan.
Yeah, well, I got to tell you, the stuff that we just shared with you here was done exactly that way.
Yeah.
And so it's all around internal emissions, but we did exactly that. We have that, that Mackenzie curve, as it were. And so as soon as we've completed this, our... And so as soon as we've completed this, our internal update here, the shift of focus will move towards the community-wide plan. So we're not actively working on it right now.
Yeah, okay. Have you thought about the fund, the CRO fund, being added to and enhanced by the savings that were created by other projects inside a kind of segregated mountain, putting them into that fund, something that would be used?
Yeah.
As an incentive?
Yeah. That's been, that has been in discussion. It turns out to be really tricky. When we have so many, you know, legal funds and parameters around how dollars move around, it, it ends up being difficult to do that, not impossible, but...
Yeah. A lot of cities have done that with the energy efficiency projects and have it go back into the department to be able to do more.
Yeah.
Part of the initial CRO process is that we would actually, as a city council, adopt benchmarks and targets and short, for the short-term goals that we adopted and create the community-wide greenhouse gas reduction goal. And I have an intended motion that I could put on the table that would direct staff to actually move us along next time to, we meet on June 27th, to get those targets and benchmarks and community-wide goal. So when it's appropriate, I'll put that on the table for discussion.
Greg?
Thanks, Mayor. I've got two separate questions. The first one is, is this, I know that all of this is internal to the city, but we also have other agency and government partners, as well as the private sector, that has to be engaged in this effort. So for the lowest hanging of fruit, what are our conversations with L.A. County, City of Springfield, State of Oregon, school districts and other entities that operate within the city limits that we need to have a community-wide effort in terms of lifting all boats, a tide that lift all, lifts all boats, that really makes a CRO effective, community and region-wide?
Yeah. That's a, that's a great question. And again, you know, we've been focused on the internal emissions, but we're now to a point where we can start to shift our focus towards more community-wide emissions reductions efforts. I mean, we, we continue to do things that reduce emissions within the community, right? It's not as if because our office is doing this thing, we stop building MX or we do, you know, all, all the good work continues. But as far as our office starting to focus on a community-wide plan, that's something that's on the, on the docket for us. I would, go ahead.
I would just say that the existing Climate and Energy Action Plan is still being implemented throughout the departments and the, and the projects that we work on throughout the community. And so it's, it's not as if it was a static item, but it's constant in terms of our relations with all of our intergovernmental partners and working with the Chamber of Commerce and, and all the different types of work that we do as a, as an organization within the community.
But can you point to specific actions and initiatives that have been initiated by, by staff towards working with those, some of those governmental partners that you can point to that are saying, okay, the city's moving in this direction, we have the CRO that's in place and we're doing these things, but how are you, say District 4J or Bethel's School District, moving to, you know, reduce your emissions? What is your plan?
So one point I would make is that one of the things that we have on our docket to do is to upgrade our, or update our communications plan so that we're, we're starting to queue up for that conversation more effectively. But I shouldn't use the word start, we've been having it. So I've been working with staff from E-Web, 4J and the University of Oregon. In fact, we just returned two weeks ago from an ELAB accelerator. So this is a workshop put on by Rocky Mountain Institute where they bring a team from different communities. There were 13 different cities from across the country that were represented there. And the whole focus is on helping these teams figure out how to make, how to make progress on reducing emissions, specifically when the, within the electricity sector. But there are, are very tangible outcomes that are coming out of that. E-Web's already doing a couple of microgrid pilot projects which allow them more control of electricity in, in small areas. And so in that team that I just mentioned, 4J, University of Oregon, city staff and E-Web have a handful of projects that we've queued up that are all common goals to achieve reductions in emissions and increase in community resiliency. So there, and I could talk more about that if you're interested, but there, there are ongoing conversations with our partners. They're probably not what they need, need to be if we're going to meet our 50% reduction target by 2030. But we understand that. And, and as I mentioned, one of our next tasks is to queue up a communications plan that, that'll further engage community partners to get there.
Well, can I just add specifically around Bethel? We worked directly, City of Eugene staff worked directly with Bethel School District on the development of the new schools and...
Are they energy efficient?
Right. And so Willamette High School is now the first lead school in the South Willamette Valley. And so to me, that's exactly what you're asking for, is we've been on out, working in the community for a number of years, really trying to build those relationships so that we can deliver value.
And the second question has to go back to lighting. One of the issues that I think all of us have engaged from time to time over the years are constituents that talk about the poor lighting, particularly in the residential areas. And the fact that, you know, what people would like is increased wattage because, you know, being able to see what's going on at night is important from a safety perspective, whether you're driving down the street or you're walking down the street and you need to, you know, feel safe or be more safe because you have more lighting in the area. And I'm wondering, you know, based on what you just gave us about the switch out of the lights and the efficiency of the lights, that, you know, my concern is the wattage is still the same in the residential areas? And how can we get to higher wattages, better lighting and still be energy efficient in the residential areas as well as in, on commercial thoroughfares and other streets that are, you know, collectors that are used at a higher rate than, say, you know, my little street off of North Cherry?
So what, from my perspective, I think what's actually more impactful to the uniformity of lighting, more than the wattage, is the spacing. It's the spacing and the height of the poles. And we, we use those factors along with the wattage to figure out how lighting is distributed. So putting a higher wattage light or increasing the wattage on a particular pole may not get you what you want. Sometimes it just makes a real hotspot right under the light. With that said, the new lights that we've put in, LED lights are actually very adjustable. They come with three wattage settings that we can change a jumper on and it'll actually increase or decrease the brightness. They also have the potential later to add controls that would let us remotely adjust the light level up and down, within a range, but up and down so that, you know, there, there could be the ability, if we thought it was prudent, to adjust light levels up or adjust them down at different times of the day. So the, the new technology is a lot more malleable to the need if, if we've identified it.
That's helpful.
Okay, Chris?
Thank you. I really appreciate zeroing in. Since we passed a Climate Recovery Ordinance, we've all been very interested in how actually we can, we can implement this. And I know that we have set two short-term goals of carbon neutrality for the city by 2020 and a 50% reduction by 2030. And that's a pretty dramatic goal, as everybody's been pointing out. And I'm supportive of that. And, and I think we shouldn't back away from trying to achieve that. So I'm, I'm supportive of that and I think we should do it. But I think in the interest of the public being as informed as early as possible about what the implications of that might be. You talked about a communication program. And I think, I think part of it that goes even beyond that is letting the community know what the implications might be for them. I know what the city's trying to do and is trying to achieve carbon neutrality, and I think that's a great goal and hopefully we can get there. But when you talk about reducing fossil fuel use by 50% in the next 15 years, I know I'm asking you to make a guess, but do you think that in 15 years, we can achieve a 50% reduction in fossil fuel use that is not particularly noticeable or felt by the general community? Or is this something that they need to start preparing for now in terms of there will be something that they either have to do or have to accommodate in order to achieve that goal?
I'd have two comments there. One, I think if we get to 50% reduction, we're all going to know it. Yes, I think it's going to be noticeable. I think there will be changes that happen within our community, within our transportation system, within our homes. It'll be pretty obvious to us if we're taking the steps to get there. It's totally doable. But also, we've been on that trajectory for the last eight years. We've been going down about 2.5% a year. Has anybody noticed? Right? I mean, some of that admittedly is, you know, during economic downturn, we had, you know, we had loss in, of some industrial processes here, right? And so that's, that's not the way we want to reduce our emissions. But we've consistently, over the last eight, almost 10 years now, been going downward. So it's, it is doable without tremendous hardship. But that said, the further we go down that reduction slope, the more difficult those reductions become, right? Just like if you're losing weight, the first 10, 10 pounds might be hard, the last 10, the last pound is, is a real booger. We're going to run into the same thing with reducing greenhouse gas emissions. It gets more difficult as we go. I said booger in a public meeting.
Technical term.
That is a technical term.
It's a sticking...
Greenhouse gas accounting speak.
It's not, it's not.
Oh, jeez. I'm getting it all over me. So yes, you know, the things that we will have to see on the housing side, if we're going to get there, we're going to have to start moving homes that are heated by natural gas...
Right.
...to heating with electricity. People are going to know that. It should be comfortable, you know, it shouldn't make people uncomfortable, but it's going to be noticeable.
Well, I think that's the key I'm trying to get at is there could be some anxiety that could be created around the notion that, well, you've set these goals and the only way you're going to achieve them is if I can't drive my car three days a week.
Yeah.
And what I want to be able to do is, to the degree we can...
Right.
...reassure the community that we can achieve these goals without having to create an inordinate amount of pain or suffering or anxiety on the part of the community. I, I think that's a very important element of this because if you don't know what the answer is...
Yeah.
...you're going to assume the worst. And I think it's important for us to be able to reassure people that we're going to try to achieve these very important goals and do it in a way that doesn't create unnecessary burden or hardship. I'm not saying we can't promise, but our intention is to try and do this in a way that doesn't create a lot of havoc in the community and reassure whatever anxieties might be created.
Yeah, agreed. Yeah, if it comes with havoc, we're probably not doing it right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cool.
Betty?
Thank you. Sounds good for the internal steps you've taken.
Thanks.
I think the external steps will be more difficult.
I agree.
Has there been any thought of or talk about loans to house owner, homeowners to change their heating systems?
That's a great question. Not currently. There, I haven't heard discussions about that. There, there are loan funds available from E-Web to do improvements in energy efficiency. I don't know how much that extends, though, into actually transitioning a heating system from natural gas to electricity. Yeah.
Which is better, electric?
Well, if we're talking about greenhouse gas emissions alone, yeah, there's, there is some natural gas that is bio-based, but there's very little of it. So the only way we get to a really low-carbon heating is through electricity.
I was thinking of the Oak Ridge Plan of replacing wood-burning stoves, something similar to that, if people have inefficient gas heatings. Have you, I noticed you mentioned idling, but that's just for city vehicles, right?
That's correct.
The idling policy.
That's correct.
Have you thought about idling prohibition for citywide?
We haven't had that discussion, no.
And how, there are a lot more cars that aren't city cars than...
No question.
...are, of course. And how about vehicle emissions?
Say more about that. Say, say, what do you mean by that?
Or less regulating it?
Regulating them.
So right, yeah, right. So regulating vehicle emissions, and we've talked about the some that, right now, the, what's available is regulating particulate emissions, right? The air, air particles and pollution that are regulated by Oregon DEQ or in our case by El Rapa. It's certainly something that is available to us. I'm, I'm not aware of any city in the, in the state that has yet opted to do that, but my, the conversation with DEQ, they said there's nothing to keep us from doing that.
I think Portland might be considering it, but if...
They already, they already have those, they already have emissions controls on their, on their vehicles because their air quality is not good enough. So it trips the DEQ's requirement for...
We need to make our air dirtier so we can have...
Perhaps, yeah.
I think if you think it's a good idea to have some controls, you might want to come to an El Rapa meeting, second Thursday of each month, in the El Rapa building. I think one thing that would really help if we want to reduce the use of vehicles is to have secure and safe, well, convenient and secure bicycle parking. Because bicycles, you can ride them someplace and then if you park them, they might not be there when you go back, including at our library...
Yeah.
...which is a big bike-stealing place.
Yeah. I had my bike stripped in front of the, in front of this building, actually.
If we, if you make it easy for people to do the good thing, they're much more likely to do it.
Yep.
And I think that's a big thing. If, if you want people to ride bicycles, give them a, well, we, we need off-street bike paths too, but, but a place to leave it when you, when you want to get off. I remember getting a new bike back in 1990 and taking it to the San Juan Islands and having, was having a great time riding around. And then I wanted to stop someplace to eat and I thought, what will I do with this bike? I've had a lock, but a lock isn't enough sometimes. But I think that's an important thing to consider, making it easier for people to do bicycling. And also, if we could get LTD to have little buses going all around neighborhoods, would be a good, big thing. Thank you.
All right, Alan, you better move on this quickly.
All right. The, I'll skip blank. We do have a million-dollar bike-share program that's coming down the road, that we've already got the money for. You know, the, the, one of the things that we've been, we're supposed to do as part of the CRO was to adopt benchmarks and targets. And we were presented those back in November, actually, and we haven't taken action on them. So my intention here with this motion is to move us towards adopting those benchmarks and targets that were proposed by staff and then also to adopt the long-term ones. So I'll move to direct the city manager, and this is an intended motion in front of you. I move to direct the city manager to develop a, a motion for city council action on the June 27th, 2016 city council meeting that A adopts the proposed targets and benchmarks that were proposed by staff at our November 23rd, 2015 council meeting, that meets our two short-term goals of carbon neutrality for city operations by 2020 and 50% reduction in community-wide fossil fuel use by 2030. And B adopts a long-term, community-wide goal of achieving 350 parts per million of CO2 in the atmosphere by 2100.
Second.
The movement's second. And just to make the comment that what you're doing is not voting on the motion, you are voting on a motion to have the A motion brought to you, just to be clear on that.
Right. For discussion on the 27th.
One thing, Mayor, maybe you, me, you or Alan or staff can answer this question. But where are we at with funding for scenario planning in, in the central L.A. County MPO? Are we any closer to getting funding from the state on that or is that just a dead issue?
You mean to do the plan?
Yeah.
We, we were funded to do the plan and we did do the plan. And we adopted it, but we haven't done the implementation. We weren't required to, which Portland was, we weren't.
Portland was, yeah.
Yeah. So as far as I know, there's no funding to do the implementation from the state.
That's right.
Yeah, just, just in the tri-county area, right.
That's right.
But just as a side note, as a Global Warming Commission member, I'm working on with DLCD a rule, a rulemaking on transportation planning and hopefully some of that will come out to be a, a part of legislation that might include funding.
Really fast, Betty, because we need to... Our time, did you have your hand up? Okay, then I think we're ready to vote on this. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six. And two are not here, so it, so it passes. Thank you all very much. That concludes the business of the day.